Planning Commission meeting, it's now called order. There's my mallet.
Time, please?
Yes.
Time.
Yes, exactly, 7:09:30. All right, good. Madam Secretary, if you could call the roll, please.
Certainly. Chairman Ernst.
President.
Vice Chair McDermade.
President.
Commissioner Hich.
Present.
Commissioner Blumier.
Present.
Commissioner Seifried.
Present.
Commissioner Pierre.
Present.
Commissioner Bob is excused, and Commissioner Besen. We have a quorum.
Very good. Okay, let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask staff if we have any amendments to the agenda.
No, sir.
Yes, ma'am. No, sir, did you say? I'm sorry.
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Asked for removal of approval, move for approval of the minutes for April 17th. There's a motion to approve the minutes of April 17th. Do I have it? Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Seifried. And then we have a motion, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for May 6th, planning commission meeting.
Yes, so moved.
Moved by Mr. McDermade, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Seifried. Thank you very much. And I did sign those, and you got them for me? Very good.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chair, so even though you have a motion and a second, you take a vote after that?
You still have to vote.
Oh, okay. So, well, let's go back to the first item, April 17th, planning meeting. We had a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed, okay. And then the meeting, minutes for the meeting of May 6th. We have a motion and an approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any disapproval? None? And both of those are approved, moved forward. So, in communications, I see we have a note here to discuss the next planning commission meeting. Staff, can you enlighten us as to what the plans are?
Yes, sir. I have to get used to our new equipment.
I know.
My apologies. For the record, Debbie Love, Development Services Director, planning commission liaison. The question, this tonight is, will be placing your regular planning commission meeting on the, on the 1st of July, to allow for a full 4th of July. The question you always have every year, to my recollection, is do you want to have a meeting in August or no? City Council is on break. At this point, I most likely will not have items, but I'm trying to work, I can't guarantee you that I will have items for you for the August meeting. Would you prefer to hold off in making a determination? But this would be the time to set that next meeting.
Well, if we're, since this is the July meeting, correct?
This is the 4th of July meeting, yes.
Okay. So, I'd like to, yeah, let's take August off. That would be my motion.
Okay, any other discussion on that? There's been a motion to?
Second the motion.
And the motion's been seconded. All of those favorite taking August off? Say aye.
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 Okay, so we've all agreed to that.
Okay, we have a nice, you know?
Yeah.
Nice meeting there. And the next meeting would be your September meeting, which again, that's, I think, what is that weekend?
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Labor Day weekend. So, we would move it, as are typically due, to the Thursday after that? Would that, you be all amenable to that?
It should be all right.
So, we're taking a note that for the September meeting, it will be the first Thursday after the Labor Day holiday.
That would be the 11th, right?
Is that the 11th, or no, or the?
Wow.
Labor Day is the first. We would have had the meeting on the second. If we're going to do a special meeting, it's usually the following Thursday, which would be the 11th of September. September 11th.
Right?
That's one of the meetings?
Thank you.
Ross Tashana?
September 11th has some significance.
We have, and I think it's a budget meeting, right? It's also your, one of your budget meeting nights.
Yeah.
So, that's, it's up to you all.
What about that?
We wouldn't have it there anyway because?
First Thursday after the Labor Day.
If I may suggest, we'll have time, and I can look to see when the chamber is going to be available in September. And then we'll, just like we did for tonight, we can go ahead and schedule a special meeting.
If you could.
Okay.
Yeah, because the first Thursday would be the 4th.
Yeah.
So, you should be kind of in that whole holiday, but that's where I had envisioned it, but let's?
But the kids are back to school and everything on Tuesdays.
And we can't guarantee that the availability of the facilities is what Cynthia is communicating, so it may be best if we just hold off and?
Sure.
She'll poll you all, but kind of think about it in your own personal schedule as to your availability in relationship to, we'll check the availability for facilities.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Okay, so now, we've had some workshops on the LDRs, and staff, you want to also enlighten us on what's come about with those workshops and what we're finding?
We, I will be happy to give you a really brief update. The last two LDR workshops weren't as heavily attended as we had hoped. The folks who did attend were very, they found it interactive, and they had, it's a really, really fun time. We have an open house at the beginning with stations around the room, where you get to interact with various planning folks, and get feedback on different topics, of information that we would be sharing, some basic information that, about the process, about the city, about what, you know, what they discovered. And then, then there is, of course, there's lots of really good food during that time. And then we do breakout sessions of focus groups, so that you can pick a table and a topic that really interests you, and, you know, give feedback on, on specific topics, and then you can rotate around the different tables. So, what we are doing now is we're just collecting that information. The reason I wanted to put it on the agenda is to ask each of you all to use your network of folks. We've been doing social media postings, we've been doing it on TV, you've seen it at city council meetings as far as the city events, and so we really hope that you all would put the word out. And thank you for allowing me to, time to advertise the meetings and try to get folks, it's very important what we're doing, doing the LDRs, because once they're done, and then all of a su, and you don't get a chance, you don't participate, you've lost an opportunity there to talk about things that are interesting to you, or of concern, that could be addressed through the LDRs, and at least collect that information, so that we can do some work and do some analysis of that, as we start to move forward with the crafting of the ordinance itself. Thank you for the time, I appreciate that.
We thank you, doing that, and staff, I know it's a lot of work.
I meant to tell you the dates, my apologies, sir, almost, sorry. Meant to tell you the dates, you asked me the dates. The upcoming meeting is one, no, one is July 9th at 6:00 PM. It will be at Joe Celestin Center.
I'm sorry, Debbie.
It will, at 6:00 PM, Joe Celestin Center.
When?
And then the next night, on the 10th, at 6:00 PM, it will be held at the library. And again, good food, great opportunity, willing folks to listen and, and take input from you, so please share this with your networks, we appreciate that.
Debbie, do you take addresses where people sign in when they come in, so you get an idea of where they're from in the city?
We do. Yes, sir.
Is that information available for you to share with us? Just kind of a breakdown, what you've, what you've seen? Is it pretty much cross-section, or do you think that one particular part of the community responds more than the other? That there's more outreach needed in another part of the city?
The outreach is equal, right? As I told you, they're very sparsely, the first one we had, we had one member of the public show up.
I'm sorry, Debbie.
We had one member of the public show up at our first meeting. And putting, so to give you that analysis, I would love to say there's all of this information out there, and all these folks, because I think that's a good question, but with, until I get more people to attend, I can tell you that we're trying to have them in each district, so that you don't have to go anywhere outside of your district to be able to participate.
Even all the homeowners associations are aware?
We actually?
And their leadership also?
We have sent personalized invitations to homeowner associations, other groups, and so hopefully, we'll have better turnout. We had better turnout this last time, but again, not as, as many people as we had hoped. And so, we have, we have high hopes for the next two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, continued public hearings, do we have any?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. At this point, we are going to move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. Mr. Hell, do we have anything that is quasi judicial that we need to?
Yes, sir, I think, I believe the first item should be treated as a quasi judicial.
All right, sir, I turn the floor over to you, if you would like to go ahead and address that.
Okay. Now, this is a summary of quasi judicial procedures. These rules apply to applications on specific parcels of land, like zoning map amendments, special exceptions, variances, and conditional use requests. The commission will sit like a court, hence the term quasi judicial, reviewing the facts presented at the hearing, applying the adopted rules as explained by staff in the staff report and verbally. Commission members can make site visits, but must disclose the evidence upon which they intend to rely from that visit. Commission members will disclose at the beginning of the hearing whether they've had communications with individuals on behalf of the applicants or otherwise, including who the communication was with and what the topic of discussion was. All persons intending to speak to the commission will be sworn by the clerk. The staff will make a presentation, the commission may ask questions. The applicant will make a presentation, including expert witnesses, if any. Commission may ask questions. When the public hearing is open, the public can make comments on the application, limited to two to three minutes each. Citizen testimony must be fact-based, not opinion. Commission or board may ask questions, and the applicant's attorney, if any, may ask questions on cross-examination. Members of the public can decline to be cross-examined. Staff may present additional testimony or supplement, to supplement or rebut arguments made.
Thank you very much, sir. Is that for both items?
I was just taking a breath.
All right, okay. You're allowed, okay?
I had a note to make on the floor, thank you. The commission deliberates based on the evidence presented. Commission's decision must be based on competent substantial evidence, meaning based on the record, staff presentations, expert presentations, and fact-based comments by citizens according to the standards for approval set forth in the city code. The commission may approve, deny, or continue the item. While staff previously read into the record, emailed or mailed comments, since these are not competent substantial evidence, for example, not sworn testimony subject to cross-examination, the board's decision cannot be based on what is contained in the emails or mailed comments, but it can be used to identify issues and help identify sources of information that do contain competent substantial evidence upon which the decision can be based. Lastly, we ask each of you to treat this proceeding with respect and proper decorum, no calling out, interrupting speakers, or disrupting the proceeding. Please give this proceeding the same dignity and respect as if you were in court. Disruptions are prohibited and forcible pursuant to the city code. Please also silence your cell phones, thank you.
Okay, were they for both items, or do we need to, or it's just the one?
Not just the first.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so Madam Secretary, I ask if you could swear in anyone who will be addressing the commission?
Okay, is there anyone who will be speaking to the commission on the first item? If you?
If they have any questions for you?
Yeah, I need to swear you in. So, if you plan to speak, please stand, all who plan to speak. Oh, no, you don't have to come, just, yeah. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you very much. So, PC 17-110 is a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving the vacation, abandonment, and sale of the portion of Northwest 120th Street between Northwest 7th Avenue and I-95, further authorizing the city manager to negotiate the sale of said section of public land, and to take all necessary steps to effectuate same, providing for effective date and for all other purposes. May we have staff report?
Okay, so Dr. Besen, is, this is the item you discussed with me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we discussed the possibility of having a conflict due to your relationship with a relative of?
With a relative of Dr. Moisey.
Okay, and I have advised you that it's not a conflict, and you can participate.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, very good.
Okay, ready with the presentation?
Yes, please.
Once again, for the record, Debbie Love, Development Services Director. The item before you is a request to abandon a portion of Northwest 120th Street in District Technical difficulty. It's not moving. Cynthia, can you move the slide for me? This doesn't seem to be wanting to work.
This is all you have? Oh, there we go.
Thank you. It is about a 200-foot lineal portion of a 60-foot wide street. The, as you can see in the staff report, I'm sorry, the one slide is, is missing off of there. In my staff report, you can see that Dr. Moise's properties front the requested abandonment area. It is about, again, the total abandonment request is 12,000 square feet. This particular street dead ends at I-95. It has been reviewed by both the planning department as well as Public Works, and, and for utilization, there's also in your, in your packet, letters of no objection from the various utility companies, FPL, TECO, and, and they have no objection to the abandonment of this area. Public Works has none either. Staff recommends approval, I want to talk to you a little bit more about it. As you can see, this is the plot, this is actually the, the survey of the area for abandonment. It's a sketch in legal, so that you can see those two properties to the south, and the four properties to the north are owned by the applicant. And they wish, they have some interesting plans for the area that we think falls in line with the newly adopted Northwest 7th Avenue Cultural Arts and Overlay District. The first big component that they are proposing is this really interesting archway that will go into, that will be the entry point for that new area that they're going to work on. Go ahead. And as you can see, they're, look, next slide, please. As you can see, this is looking from the parking area, they are looking at street improvements, you know, paving areas that are unique and nicely designed, with the goal of, of having the opportunity to create a parking area for their clinic that could be also used for community events. And the, one of the goals in the, in the Northwest 7th Avenue plan has always been, and in the comprehensive plan has always been, to look at those properties that dead end up against I-95 for the use of open space and community events. So, this fits in very well, very nicely with that. And at the very end, at the I-95, where it bumps up to the I-95 right-of-way, they're proposing a very nice fountain, so it looks like, looks to be a very nice project, but you're not voting on any project tonight, you're voting on the abandonment, but you always need to know the context of why they are requesting abandonment. Let me get through my slides here. Both the charter and our LDRs require that the city obtain two independent appraisals from, for the property in question, that are, they are seeking to, for the city to abandon, to determine the fair market value. And our charter requires that the city cannot sell any property for less than 90% of the highest appraisal. So, at that value, it would be $648,000 is what they would be required to pay the city for that. And then we would do a deed transfer. No, you're fine, there you go. We would then do a deed transfer, I'd be working with the city attorney's office to create a city deed, deeding over that portion. They will be required to, if, if there are conditions from the utility companies for an easement of any sort, when they come in for the plans and go through the DRC process, they will need to provide any easements that are required. They will have to unify the properties, whether it's typically, when you abandon a right-of-way or a road of any sort, half goes to the property on one side, half goes to the property on the other side. He owns both sides of the property. So, whether he deeds it, wants to deed it all to one side, or whether he wants to split it, but they all have to be combined. So, he has to decide, is he going to make one large development, or is he going to assign that road to just one side of his property? And then he has to unify it with the parcels that are on one side of the area. So, has to do that within 45 days of the resolution. So, the next steps would be that they go before city council. We are putting them on their first council meeting in August, and you know, those are always tentative when we, I don't control that agenda, but that is when it's planned to be there. So, they'll go before city council, and the resolution that is in your package, city council cannot sell it for any less than 90%, but they can sell it for full, they can sell it for full value. You also have that option to recommend full value, but it can be no less than 90%. And then, once that's done, as I said, they'll have to, we'll give them a deed, they'll pay us the money, we'll give them the deed, and then, then they'll go in and bring their project to us, so that we can expeditiously get them through, to help them develop what their dream is for that area. And that is the end of my presentation. The applicant is here, if you have any questions as well.
And Mr. Chair, just to make sure we don't miss a step, if there are any disclosures that need to be made, we should go ahead and do that.
Right, at this time, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask if there's any disclosures that needs to be made prior to discussion, and prior to us opening the here, the public hearing.
I have none.
No prior communication?
I have none.
None.
None, none here?
None.
None, okay, very good. So, I do have a question. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and then we'll, we'll move on from there. There's just a couple, it's technical issues more than anything else, and I don't want to bog down the, the meeting here. So, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. We see none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed, yes. Okay, public hearing is now closed. And I'll, we'll go ahead and turn this to a discussion, if there's any questions or observations anyone on the commission would like to make, I'm going to, go ahead and ask a question on this. I was trying to figure out, if you can explain a little bit more, of the numbers that came up with, from the, the original appraiser, on the appraiser, which was 700 and, here, I just saw the numbers.
That was $720,000.
$720,000. And then there's another one that says 700,000. Why are there two numbers? And was this the only appraisal that we got? Is only one appraisal needed in this case for? So, I'm looking at the two numbers that are, one from each one of the two independent appraisers, and independent meaning? Right. Okay. Right. Yeah, Debbie, you turned your mic on.
See, I'm not used to that, sorry. It has to be city-commissioned, it has to be independent businesses, and that we cannot accept appraisals that are ordered by the applicant.
Okay.
Only the ones that we order, that come directly to us.
Okay. So, then, is the final sum of $648,000 that we see, is that, how is that, what is the process of getting to that number?
90% of the highest appraisal.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm bad at math.
I'm there for you.
I think it's in the charter, too, for a moment.
It is, I, it's actually in the charter, one of the slides that froze for you, actually gave you the citation for, for the charter, and I'll do that for you right now. The charter, city charter requires that the purchase price of city-owned land be no less than 90% of the highest appraised value.
But the city can, the city can still require them to pay the 720, right?
Correct, that's, that is not more. It has to be, because it's appraised at that. So, it is 90% up to 100% of the appraised value.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Besen.
How does the city choose its appraisers to be independent, so to speak?
We have a pool that, and the ones that I have used over the years, that I have valued the work, and have reviewed the work that they've done, and feel confident in them. There is a pool of about six that we know that do them well, and that we feel confident in their abilities.
Okay, I'm going to ask each one, two of our commissioners, if they have any comment. Mr. Seifried, I'll start with you, sir.
I have none, this is in my neighborhood, and I fully support the proposal.
Thank you very much. Naomi?
Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I just want to clarify on the record that we do have two independent appraisals, one from Jeff Michael, represented by Miami Appraisal, at 720, and then one for a camp, Dellenbach and Whitney, and that one is for 700,000. And the, the applicant has proposed six?
No, they're required to pay a minimum of 648,000. City cannot pay any less than that.
So, staff is saying that based on the charter, this is the required amount. It had nothing to do with the applicant.
No, ma'am.
Thank you so very much, I just wanted to clarify that. I know the applicant very well, from their work in the community there, he has been here for decades, longstanding commitment, is doing phenomenal work. I have been inside the facility myself, and I have witnessed what it means to the community for us to have this location, and I'm looking forward to see this new project. I will support it.
Very good, thank you. Mr. McDermade, sir?
Ah, yes, I, together with Ms. Blumier.
Ah, yes, I, together with Ms. Blomir, know the doctor and know his work and know the facility, and I certainly support the application.
Very good. And Mr. Reach?
Doc, you took a crummy corner and you made it into a thing of beauty. I can remember when that, what, Lattice Restaurant was there, 119, what a dump. You made it beautiful, Doc. Thank you. Really, thank you, thank you very much.
And finally, Mr. Besson. Let's, not finally, Mr. Besson?
Yes. Have a question for you. What type of medical services will you be providing there? Please.
Doctor, if you don't mind.
Doctor, if you don't mind, we need your name and address for, for the record. Thank you, sir.
Okay, you're good.
I've been practicing for the past 40 years, and the new building that you saw there, we just built it about five or six years ago, and then we do, on the first floor, primary care, on the second floor, we do aesthetics. So, and we're looking forward to really develop the area. We purchased, like Ms. Love said, properties on both sides. We need to beautify the area, you know? So I, I made a mistake, what my brother told me years ago, to invest in Wynwood. At that time, he was just like, nothing. And now, you see what it is. So this is going to be, hopefully, the next Wynwood. And we need to beautify the city of North Miami, so, and that's my, and I'm proud to say I'll probably be the first one in the corner to do this, with your, of course, with your approval, so. And it allowed me also to thank Ms. Love, because she's really, I've been working very hard at, at, at educating us and doing the proper things. The previous director, you know, I'm sorry, he did not do a good job. So, Ms. Love, I just wanted to thank you for the hard work that you're doing, for guiding us on the proper way to do this, so.
My pleasure.
Well, looking forward to seeing that center being enlarged. And congratulations, you have my full support.
Thank you.
One more question?
I think we have one more.
Yeah, I have, I have, Mr. Pierre?
Yeah, no, it's a great project, and the street isn't being used for anything else anyway, so I think it's great, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott, if you'd like to add something?
You know, when you look at that street, and you look at what his facility is, it's just a, it's just a natural that that street would be an entryway into what, you know, what he's doing. It's just, it was just, I mean, it's just really going to be nice. And I love the entryway that you're going to create there. That's going to really be able to begin to set off Seventh Avenue and, and the projects that are coming after, so.
And I, thank you, I'd like to add that the abandonment, this is again, for a portion of the street.
Right.
I do not own the building in the corner, which is a white building in the corner, which in the process of negotiating to see if we can buy it as well. So I might come back later and then just decide to buy the other half of the street, if it makes business sense. So that's something we're going to have to talk to Mrs. Love about. But right now, we're only concerned about that portion of the city where I own both sides of the property, so.
Nice.
Very good. Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for.
I, so move?
Second.
Mr. McDermott moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blomir. We'll do a roll call vote on this.
Thank you.
I'll start with Mr. Besson.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Besson is a yes. Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Pierre is a yes. Mr. Seifert?
Yes.
Mr. Seifert is a yes. Ms. Blomir?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ms. Blomir is a yes. Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott is a yes. Mr. Reach?
Yes.
And Mr. Reach is, yes, and Chairman Ernst is also a yes. The item moves unanimously. And doctors, thank you very much, and we wish you continued success, and we thank you again for all the contributions you've made to this.
Charlie, I don't, I don't know if you know this, you're, you're an Air Force guy. On top of being a great doctor, our good doctors are colonel in the Air Force Reserve.
Sir, I salute you. Thank you. You must know well her shepherd. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda, and we'll get right to it, here is PC 17-111, or 111. An ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, providing for text of MS to Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled, Land Development Regulations by Amending Article 4, Zoning Districts, Article 5, Development Standards, and Article 7, Definitions, further, furthering the implementation of Northwest Seventh Avenue Cultural Arts and Innovation Overlay District, providing for repeal, conflicts, severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and for an effective date. And may we have staff report. Debbie, can I add something real quick? It's just kind of like, we, we had similar discussions, if I'm not correct, the last meeting, when we were talking about the overlay district for this, correct?
This is part two.
This is part two.
We, the last one, we established the district.
Right.
Set the parameters for alcohol beverage, tried to get that tightened up.
All right.
But every time you do something, there's ripples through the code, and the attorney's office recommended that we bring the cleanup, part two, and separately to you.
Right. So, and these would include add-ons or anything that we had discussed at the, at the meeting? If I recall, we might have had some items that we wanted to, to see added to that.
We presented those to city council.
Okay.
And they did not vote on them. Staff had said, one of the, we presented those to city council for that. We have to come back for second reading, and they did give us some direction on what to change. So if you're really interested in going beyond staff's presentation and speak to each of the council members of your recommendations between now and then, but between now and then as well, we were directed by city council to have a town hall for the community to, you know, better understand it. So between now and the next time it comes before us, it will not be at the 826 meeting for city council for second reading. Remember, it had a comp plan amendment. So we have to, we transmitted that to the state.
Right.
We got to wade until the state responds, then we have to prepare whatever, if they have any comments, typically with the level that we are doing here, they, they usually don't comment, but we still have to wade through the process. And then, once that comes back, then we can schedule it for second reading. So in the meantime, we are going to be doing a town hall. You have an opportunity to speak to each of your council members to share your, your thoughts that you had shared at the last meeting.
The reason why I ask is because of the chart that you presented. I'm trying to find it now, if you'll give me just one second.
Sure, sir.
Where you discussed what specifics would be added to, to the regulations within that overlay district.
Use, are you talking about use?
I can't, you'll have to forgive me for not finding it right.
Are you talking about in this staff report, sir?
Yes.
It's actually in the body of the ordinance.
Okay, I found it now.
I've given you on, on page two of your staff report, I've given you a bulleted overview of what is in this piece of it.
Right.
So you can see that we updated the use table, and we didn't make changes, because there's a lot of things we want to change, but we're coming through the LDR workshop.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to try to clarify, because if we're making changes in the LDR, anything in this report that is being recommended, can that, how will that play into what, what will be presented as a part of the overall LDR?
That would, this would be fed into it? But remember, we aren't producing new LDRs for a little bit of time yet. So these changes only affect, are only to implement the Northwest Seventh Avenue Arts and Innovation District.
Okay.
We didn't, and the title of it is very clear. We needed to, it specifically make changes only related to that district. As we work through the LDRs and get feedback from the community on the overall other uses, things that they would like to see elsewhere, that will go in the update, the, the updated LDRs. This, but this piece right here will probably be effective before you adopt the new LDRs. So this will be incorporated as part of the existing LDRs.
Right.
And then we'll adopt further amendments down the road that will address the rest of the city.
So anything that we, we okay tonight, or if we okay this overlay, if it goes before the commission and they want to add or subtract anything to that, they can, but then, when the land, what I'm trying to see is if, if we're going to be doing double, double approval or, or double denial on, on certain things.
No, because we don't anticipate the LDRs, the, the citywide LDR amendments to, to be adopted much before October, November of this year. These will already be in our.
So that we have something there now to work with, should we have, to need to, to address issues that might come up between now and that time?
Not in this ordinance, no. This is, this ordinance is only to implement the arts and overlay, I mean, the arts and innovation district on Northwest Seventh Avenue.
Okay, all right.
Because there's lots of things that you may want to go in here, we don't want to allow that, we want a special use, or.
Right.
This is only for that particular overlay district. And they match what, what the part one that you got. So now, we got all those new uses that you all approved for that area, now they're in the use table. You'll see that they're, they have underlines to them. Some of them were, they wanted them to be prohibited in the arts and overlay district, so you'll see that some of the number, the super three that you see footnote is not allowed in the Northwest Seventh Avenue Cultural Arts and Overlay District. You'll see that some are just completely underlined because they're new, like recreation, outdoor recreation. We really never even had a category for that citywide. So this ultimately will benefit the rest of the city that we actually have a category. And they wanted it permitted through a, and we wanted it as staff, as a site plan requirement. So you'll see that it's underlined, it's permitted, and it has an asterisk, which means that they have to get an administrative site plan approval at a minimum by staff. And if it's a larger enough, large enough project, they may have to bring that to city council. And this matches up to what they wanted allowed, and that, what is in the first iteration, part one.
Yeah.
Okay?
Since, since I, I, I'm not familiar with everything we allow in, in a commercial district one. There are additional items that would be added within the overlay that still have to conform with whatever, since it is considered commercial district one, or it's a commercial district, right? So they have their, they have their zoning regulations. We're putting in the overlay district, and we're going to add more layers of what they can do and what they can't do.
This, this chart is, is not, is simply to take what is written in words and make it an easy way to say that this land, this use is allowed in this zoning district. So by using this chart, this says in C1, in the allowing outdoor recreation.
Right.
Now, we didn't specify that that particular one is only for the arts and overlay district. That's going to benefit, you know, elsewhere in C1. That if they wish to be able to do outdoor recreation, they could do that. But the bulk of them, because you can't just say, this is only going to be allowed here. Because, like you said, some of these, like, this is pretty much the biggest one that you'll see here. And then you have another one that is discount variety store.
Right.
We do not allow that typically in, there's a distance separation, and we did not have that as a use. They wanted to make sure that in C1, it is not allowed in the, in the arts and innovation district.
Yeah.
So you see, that's a new one, it's underlined, asterisk, and seven, so it's prohibited. So in order to add it, to make it prohibited, you have to add it. And so the point you're making is well taken, because there are a couple of things in here that will affect C1s throughout the city, but there's some specificity limitation that they wanted in the cultural arts and overlay district. There's no way you could have.
Right.
So the point you're making is well taken. But that's very rare. Most of them are existing uses that they want it either prohibited or add distance separation. And I think you'll see there's one, two, two or three that are in here that may affect the C1, but we're not prohibiting it. It's saying site plan approval is required, which is a logical.
When I, when I see one that's, P is permitted.
P is permitted.
The asterisk means what?
That it requires a minimum site plan approval, so there are things they have to produce for us.
Okay.
So it's not as of right. It is as of right, but you have to produce certain analyses, study information, it could be everything from traffic analysis to looking at your utility availability, as far as water sewer. It allows a development review committee level review of these projects to make sure that it doesn't, they don't become nuisances.
Debbie, what does, what does SE stand for?
Special Exception. These are the ones that have to go through the Board of Adjustment for approval, review and approval, through a special exception. One of the big things that we did add is they wanted to put a distance separation for barber shops, beauty salons.
Did we increase it or decrease it?
They wanted a distance separation and it matches the same distance separation for the downtown that is in place now. But we didn't ever had it in the use table.
Pardon?
It was never in the use table. So while it's allowed through a distance separation, it was never in this use table.
But now we have it in the table.
Now we have it in the table. So the next phase of it is to discuss, as we do the LDRs, because this will become part of the code that we'll be discussing, is do we want to limit them elsewhere? Do you want distance separation elsewhere? We have it in the downtown, they wanted it in the arts and overlay district. So right now, we have it, we did not address it in any other district, because that's not part of this.
Okay.
See? So even though it should be under C3 as well.
Yeah. Can that be addressed in, in the process of approving the LDR?
Yeah, it, it, if you want to do that in other, if you want to do that same thing in other zoning districts.
Right.
Because right now, there's, I didn't even put C3, it's allowed in C3 with a distance separation.
Right.
But because we were trying to focus just on what this district.
Yeah.
I didn't, I, well, some things I had to make them citywide, other things I could make it just specific to C1.
I understand. I see.
But I did not, I did not, I could not go in and do the same thing for other zoning districts.
Right.
You follow?
But there is, again, to reiterate, there is a process that that can be achieved through the LDR amendments or whatever, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. No, that's, I just needed clarity more because of the fact that, again, with the overlays having already, there, there's ordinances already in place for the C1. having already, there's ordinances already in place for the C1 as to, you know, what the effect the overlay ordinances that we're putting in there have on the C1. Basically, that's all, I just want a clearer understanding on that.
Of course, sir. Of course, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. Pierre?
None.
Ms. Blamire?
Thank you, thank you, staff. So the first question that I have is, the Seventh Avenue is not the only space that needs this change, right? And so if we're talking about the comprehensive plan, why are we not looking at it comprehensively? Why are we only dealing with Seventh Avenue when we have an entire city that has certain sections where we, especially downtown, where we say that we want traffic and we want a nightlife and we're not looking at it comprehensively to ensure that those locations have the same, the same opportunity?
I hear you. This is specifically requested by administration to focus on implementing the new Northwest Seventh Avenue Cultural Arts and Overlay District. Through the, through the LDR update, these discussions for elsewhere in the city to look at these same issues is what we were just talking about. Look at the same issues through those meetings, those workshops that have been poorly attended, is the chance to talk about elsewhere. We already know, and I've long wanted to do this, is to work more on the downtown and look at what we're doing in the downtown. There's some great things coming out of this for Northwest Seventh Avenue that could also be applied to the downtown. So, but that's not part of this particular ordinance. I was, we were asked to move this one along, to stimulate and move Northwest Seventh Avenue along and to implement that particular overlay.
So at what point will we be looking at downtown? And, and, and I, I just want to be clear. I am all for it, I, I love it, I think it's great, but I do have a problem with us taking a small bite and not taking the whole thing.
That's what.
And the whole thing is the entire city.
Right.
That we should ensure that comprehensively, we are building it out in, and giving everybody, every small business owner that have these type of businesses that can benefit, the same opportunity.
Absolutely.
And so when we do it for just one district and we don't simultaneously propose or consider the others, it may seem as if we're just working on one side. So that's all I'm just saying. I, I would love and I'm waiting forward to see the day when we start focusing on downtown, just like we're focusing on Seventh Avenue, which is great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And remember, as I said, the LDR workshops are where this conversation starts and they've been sparsely attended, which is disappointing because that's important conversations to have, to look, now is the chance to look at everything, as you said, very eloquently, comprehensively. We don't get a chance to do this very often, to, to take our code. We just adopted the comp plan. These are the LDRs that are to implement them. This LDR update, so they asked us to fast track this piece of it while we are, because that's a, they had a vision, the council person has a vision, they have design guidelines, they're ready to go, they just needed this to implement it while we are doing these LDR workshops that I'm trying to get people to come and attend, to have those wonderful comprehensive conversations. I'm very excited and looking forward to it myself because there's some great things that you all have talking about, great things that have come out of this work that, that we've done that would be, you know, like alcohol beverage things, right? So lots of good things will come out of that workshop, but we just need everybody to participate and share that because the consultant needs you, needs, needs the residents, needs the business owners to help share, this is what we would like to see. We have that vision, that's not my vision, that's the vision from the comp plan, but the LDRs implement that vision.
Understood.
And so I'm looking forward to it and I'd love to see you text that out. Shut up at those meetings, it's so important.
I'll be there and I'll make sure that I share it and see if I can motivate others to do so.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate that so much.
Debbie, can you text it to us?
Text what? Yes, Cynthia will make sure that you get the, the dates, the flyers.
Could you send it by text?
Oh, you want to text?
Mike, Mr. McDaramay does.
Okay.
But we have flyers, it's on our website under Development Services.
I know, I, I see the emails all the time. I mean, I've been getting.
Yeah, before we have each of them, I make sure that I send it to every single, I've sent it to your board as well as the Board of Adjustment. Inviting you to come.
Yes.
Let me throw in.
And requesting that you share it with your contacts.
Let me throw in that I prefer text messaging. For some reason, I've not had a new email in three months, I don't know what the problem is. So it's, text messaging works really well for me, email seems not to be functioning at all.
Okay. We'll make sure that you get it in whatever your preferred format is.
Yeah, texting works great.
Yeah, get, get together with Cynthia after the meeting and let, let her know.
If I can point out a couple of other changes to the.
Cynthia, Kenny would like a text, text to him as well.
Okay. I'd like to call your attention to.
You do call me, I always love hearing your melodious voice.
Yes, sir.
Melodious voice, okay.
Did you have any other questions?
No, that's it. And again, I thank staff for presenting this and I look forward to seeing how it gets rolled down on Seventh Avenue and how we can follow through with the entire city.
Love, I love that. I do want to point out one thing to you here that's a different thing that you've probably not dealt with before, but we are finding a proliferation of smoke shops. So.
Vapers.
Yeah, yeah. So you'll notice that in the ordinance, we've actually defined the smoke shops and because they called it out as something they wanted to, to prohibit in that overlay district. I got, and, and I actually have underlined mistakenly the M1. There's no M1 over there, so before, this is a typo, so before it goes to city council, I have to remove that typo because remember, I'm trying to just stay focused on the C1, specifically the, the overlay district. But they want to prohibit that and that will be a discussion that we'll have as a community in the other districts, including industrial. Because a lot of communities are having challenges with smoke shops. And you'll see that we have created a definition. If you'll look in the ordinance, it's one of the last sections in the ordinance under Article 7 definition. We've created two definitions, one for outdoor venue, because we do not have a definition for outdoor venue. So you really, and, and we need to have a control, they wanted to make sure that outdoor music after 11:00 PM is not played, is not allowed. So we, we defined outdoor, what an outdoor venue is. That could be the outdoor part of the restaurant, it could be a, it could be Nomi Village, it could be any of those type of places where you're having any sort of performance spaces, any sort of gathering spaces where a lot of people can be. You can have an outdoor restaurant that all they're doing is they're playing the Super Bowl on TV or whatever and you get a lot of noise from just that. It doesn't have to necessarily be music. But we very specifically said in the ordinance that we created a new section 516 in the ordinance about outdoor venues, that if they are going to have music and entertainment, that they can't have any speakers or live music after 11:00 PM. That if it's an outdoor restaurant, they have specific standards within 5109, but again, an outdoor, any outdoor venue providing music and entertainment has to stop at 11 o'clock. Sanitation, because we have places like Nomi Village and other open spaces that if they're going to serve food, we want to make sure that they comply with the FDA for hygiene and cleaning, fire safety, and really important is alcohol service. So we want to make sure that they're properly trained, that they get their alcohol beverage permits, and that they have to have the signs for open container laws. Because when you get to these outdoor venues and you get yourself a cup and then you start to wander off down the street, because this is going to be an entertainment district, remember? So we want to make sure people aren't going from entertainment venue, walking down the street with their cup. We want to make sure that they, they're required to post those.
Except if it's a Panther parade.
Open.
And follow.
Right. So those are, as you can see, the table, we updated the table, we made some corrections to Chinatown, back to Northwest Seventh Avenue, we did some cleanup. And again, under Restaurant Open Air, we again reemphasize that all venues that have open air restaurants, back in the, as part of theirs, that they have to get an entertainment music license and that no amplified sound after 11:00 PM. And the reason I say sound versus music is again, sort of that, you're going to, you're, you're playing the Super Bowl on TV and sound, that the cheering and the loud playing of the TV. We're trying to make sure that, for me, it's really important as the chief planner that these things, while we want to, to, to make the district successful, we want to protect the residents and their quality of life as well. So there's a balance that we, we want to make sure we walk and that's by giving proper guidance to them, having proper things in place, and then that's it for us. So unless you have further questions, that's.
I believe, Naomi, you had a further comment?
Yes, I just have one question as it relates to the smoke shops. I am one of many who absolutely hate the fact that they are so close to each other and it seems as if the city had no idea that this was happening and by the time that they realized it, it was too late for them to actually put the proper ordinance in place not to have them so close together, especially in District 1. So I just want to, if you can state on the record, will there be the distance between them? Is that a part of it or no? Just have, just like you have for the barber shops, they're here, salons, convenience stores.
It's actually, remember, I'm only addressing what's in C, I'm only addressing what's in C1 right now.
Okay.
In C1, it's prohibited in the Cultural Arts and Overlay District.
Perfect, so they will not be, not even one?
Not even one in C1, in that district, in the arts and overlay district, no.
Excellent.
Because we've got to put it in there to be able to either prohibit it or to put some distance separation. We need to have the conversation because typically in the city attorney and Mr. Held can opine on zoning completely out a use. And I think I would, if you had questions on that, I think that's important for you to understand. I would defer to both of them as to why we have to at least address it somewhere. So right now, I would have a bit of control through the site plan review process in C1. And then we can talk further as to whether it's prohibited in other areas or we make a distance separation requirement. And again, that's not a decision I can make, this is what they're requesting me to do, is to make sure smoke shops are not allowed there. And right now, if you look at it, it would only be allowed in C1 through a site plan approval and prohibited in the arts and innovation district. They'll have to talk to you about, as we get along, whether or not you can completely zone them out.
Thank you.
What, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that. What did you, I, I.
Smoke shops. The vape shops.
Oh, oh, thank you, yeah, I, I agree with you, yeah.
Alright.
Charlie, I have a question, please, when we.
I was going to let Mr. Best.
Yes, fine.
Have the floor.
Quick question. How did we advertise these community locations to meet and talk about the LDRs and so on? How was it communicated to the public?
Through social media postings, through TV, through invitations to the homeowner associations. We had one workshop that was specifically, like yours workshop was specific for you. We had folks for the development community, the business community, and we reached out specifically to developers, contractors, we reached out specifically to business owners and the homeowner associations for the invitations. We also have been doing social media posting, we have been, TV 76, they've been sending it out e-blast. So we have done quite, our marketing folks, our communication folks have been going over and above trying to get the, it out. And, and the fact that usually food brings people out and the food is awesome.
By the way, we also send it out through Constant Contact, which has, I would say close to about 5,000 contacts in there that they've been collecting over the last decade. So they send it through Constant Contact as well and all the HOAs.
Did, did you consider the use of roadside signs?
Okay, we can't do that. Because those are called snipe signs and our code prohibits snipe signs.
Okay. So, you know, that's.
We have to follow our own rules and that was.
I guess so, alright, well, that idea's out.
But I, I like the creativity, I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Seifert, you have the floor, sir?
Yeah, yes, Ms. Love.
Yes, sir.
I, I, the residents on the west side are just up in arms over the noise out of Nomi Village at 2:00 in the morning on weekends. And we're talking about a cutting off of 11:00 PM. Will Nomi Village be granted some kind of grandfathered in because of existing lease and contracts? Or are they going to be bound to this 11:00 PM cutoff? Or we don't know?
Well, at this point in time, what I can speak to, sir, is this would be applicable to every single parcel of land in that zoning district. It is also applicable to any outdoor venue and that would be Nomi Village. And the city manager has not been approving any sort of activity out there after 11:00 PM as far as noise. So the police have been there and shutting the music down at 11:00 PM. So they've worked with the city administration to not have those things happening. This will also help with the nightclub problem as well. Because the nightclub, they're supposed to keep everything inside and they should not have anything going on outside, they're supposed to be soundproofed to be a nightclub. This is why I think that we had, as you recall, Mr. H, we had a, a restaurant that wanted to have a, be a nightclub, but they were outdoors. You can't have a nightclub outdoors. So they want, they came before as wanting a special exception to operate as a nightclub, but you can't, you can, there's no way, you can soundproof an outdoor venue. So I believe, not just myself, but, and I'm, I don't want to speak for the attorneys, but the goal of what we've written here is to protect the residents. One of the recommendations you all had that was communicated to city council was to prohibit nightclubs, limit nightclubs to just one side of Northwest Seventh Avenue. So those are the, those, that idea is something you should, if you're really interested, still interested and passionate about that, communicate that to your council people, your council members as part of the next, for the second reading that would be coming forward after the comp plan comes back from the state.
Well, I would think that maybe at that point, I would want us to maybe draft some wording to have that passed on as, you know, a unanimous decision by this board that noise issues be addressed in some manner, so.
The noise issue will be addressed. Your recommendation was to limit nightclubs to just one side of Northwest Seventh Avenue because we've addressed the noise issue by limiting outdoor noise or amplified noise after 11:00 PM. Now, I'm mirroring actually what's in the noise ordinance, but this makes it right in your face.
Right.
That it's, and makes it very clear, you don't have to go to another section of the code to know that that. code to know that that outdoor venue, it, you cannot make noise because we have a noise ordinance. So we're tying the outdoor venue directly to the noise ordinance. So that's why it's 11:00 PM. Because you're not supposed to have noise after 11:00 PM. And during the weekday, it's 10, it's 10:00 PM.
When enforcing this, I mean, it, to me, it seems like a, a larger sledgehammer, so to speak, needs to be shown to those who wish to partake in creating this, these problems. And if they think they, that those persons involved with throwing the party think that they can get away with it, then they continue to do it unless they know that, you know, Thor's hammer will come down hard and heavy on them if they break the rules. And it appears that maybe there's not enough, I'm not, I don't want to use the term force, but enough incentive to not have them disregard what the ordinances are. I mean, that's the only nice way I could put it.
I know, Mr. Held would like to, to say something.
Yes, sir.
But to that, to that aspect, this actually provides a bit more clarity to that and it will help code as well. Mr. Held?
Yes, sir.
So Debbie, I just want to clarify, the commission's position on the west side of Northwest Seventh Avenue not including nightclubs, that's not part of this ordinance and it needs to be restated again at some future date?
If that's what they wish to do because we already presented it to city council for first reading and they did not opt to pick that recommendation up.
Oh, so it was, it was part of the recommendation for first reading?
Correct, sir.
And it wasn't adopted by the council?
That is correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure you're all on the same page with regard to that recommendation. It's already been made to the city council and they did not incorporate it as part of their approval on first reading of this ordinance.
That's why I said you may want to reach out to your council members if this is.
But we can't, we can't do it in, in this forum tonight.
You can, you can.
We can.
But that is not part of this ordinance.
But can we add?
Presently exists.
As it presently, as what you're presenting.
Right. It would just be a reiteration of a prior position to, to make a point.
We'll add that to the staff report that they wish to reiterate.
That's what we're finding, yeah. So, Mr. Held?
Sir?
Go ahead. Confirm then if there is someone, if I turn the floor over to Ms. McDermade, have them express in a form of emotion or whatever, what we would like to have reiterated.
Reiterate it and make it.
Do we need to have that done that way? Do we need to have a motion put in place?
Well, it, it, it's your prerogative to make that preference statement at any time and as many times as you want to. Is your mic on? Is your mic on?
You gotta get used to these new mics, Mike.
Well, there was always the button.
Pardon? Yeah, I pushed the button. So the, it would be the restriction of nightclubs on the west, west side of Seventh Avenue within the Arts and Culture District.
Correct.
All right. Now, are we, we?
The point is you still stand by that recommendation.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Right.
I mean, you, you have a couple of bars over there now. You have Randy's, I think, and.
Oh, there would be a grandfathering, there would probably be.
Yeah, yeah. But they still have to have the requirements, right, Deb, of, of the soundproofing and so?
Nightclubs are required to do that now, so.
Yeah.
And then they can't. And they are also subject to the.
Right.
Right.
Which is 11:00 PM.
Well, I.
Microphone. Your mic.
You know.
Everybody's mic needs to be on if you're gonna.
Yes.
Okay. I, I'd like to, you know, stand by that motion. And I, I think that, you know, it's good to reiterate things that are important, not only from the standpoint of doubling down on what we believe in, but also to make sure that there's some attention to enforcement, which is always an issue.
Right. Well, legislation's the first hurdle.
First step, yes.
All right.
You said this will help.
So, so, Ms. Love, do we need to make a motion?
I already made one.
No, I mean, is, is a motion necessary?
Well, it's, as, as your, as your council advised, you can do that or you can do it as, you can say, I want a separate motion to reiterate. Or you can say, if you're interested in, in making an approval of this ordinance with reiteration of the northwest, on the north, west side, nightclubs, either way, it's up to you.
I, I just didn't want to leave it as an individual project to talk to your council.
Right, right, right. Correct.
You could still talk.
Yes, you might still want to do that, but I thought it important as a commission to make the statement if that is your preference. So as Ms. Love suggested, you can do this multiple ways. One is to just approve the ordinance as presented to you and then by separate motion, reiterate your prior position.
Well, I'm gonna, what we want to do is reiterate our thought.
Yeah.
It's really up to your council, your recommendation and staff's recommendation of how best to do that.
Okay. I, I don't have a preference. I don't, I don't know enough about how the city council and staff interacts.
To the, to the, since this becomes part of the, I have to, I have to put in the council report, your recommendation on this particular ordinance. And normally what I would say is they approved, you know, four to five or whatever it is, with the request, the recommendation to limit nightclubs on the west side. Then when I do my PowerPoint presentation, I actually have a slide that says, this is the recommendations of the planning commission.
Does it matter if they do it in two separate motions or one motion?
Not to me.
Doesn't matter to her.
All right. Well, I, I have a motion on the floor, which I think.
Mike, I just want to understand, we're, we're only recommending nightclubs on the east side of Seventh Avenue?
Yeah, we're prohibiting nightclubs on the west side. Okay. Because they back right up to the neighborhood.
Residential area.
Well aware.
The residential area.
Right, so.
And there seems to be, you know, and they get out of hand all the time anyway, so.
Because we, we, we've turned down at the Board of Adjustment, I think we turned down three of them.
Yeah.
That wanted to open up on 119th Street. You know where that farm store is right there? They wanted to open one there and then a couple of blocks down and, and it's, you know, and, and you, you can reach right over to the residential area.
Yeah, so.
Too close.
Preposterous.
Too close.
Mr. Chair, just with respect to your comment, I don't think it's that you're affirmatively recommending nightclubs on the east side of Northwest Seventh. You're just focusing on not.
The west side.
West side.
Right.
Okay.
Prohibiting them on the west side.
You know, you might want to add, yeah, due to the citizens complaining about the.
Talking about District Four.
Yeah.
Talking about the, the.
Overlay District?
Overlay District.
Okay. So my question is, is there a possibility that there is another part of District, I, I mean, clearly, I'm totally against it and so I just, I just want to be clear, if it is able, if you want to give, you want to give them the opportunity to do so in any part of District Four, I know we're only talking about the overlay, but please ensure that it is limited and that there is some type of restrictions. I, I would say absolutely no, but obviously I'm not in a position to say that, but if there is going to be an opportunity given, it should be limited.
Right. So if, what you have now is you have distance separation requirements from, within, within the alcohol beverage license.
Okay.
So if you, if you sell alcohol, alcoholic beverages, beer or wine.
Mm-hmm.
And you're a nightclub.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't matter, nightclub bar. If you're a nightclub, we amended it for bars, the normal bars, but for nightclubs, we left it standing. If you're so far away from another one who sells alcohol beverage, you're a nightclub, you're still have that same distance separation that exists today.
Okay.
So nightclubs have distance separations from one another through the alcohol beverage license.
Got it.
And it has it away from residential, it has it away from parks, it has it away from schools and it has it, has distance away from religious institution, which is what Mr. Each was saying to do, that they wanted them just bum, 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 bum.
Right, right. And that includes lounges as well?
Lounges are treated as bars. They're, they're different than a nightclub. A nightclub wants to operate beyond the normal operating hours of a bar lounge.
Got it.
But if they have an outdoor component with this now.
Mm-hmm.
They can't have any music or any amplified or loud noises after 11:00 PM.
Thank you.
But we've really needed to, and there, they, you don't want, you can't have a brewery district. Right? So you don't want, you want to, to encourage the things that you want by not having big distance separations from each other. Because even this, even our code says, if you are within so many feet of another nightclub, you can't have another nightclub. But bars, you want to think about a bar being, this is an entertainment district and if you're thinking about a, a brewery district, we just had a, an issue with a bar that's been here forever because there was another bar close to it in the downtown. And they had to get a variance, a distance separation variance. So that goes to your, your, your thought about having these kind of things elsewhere in the city. So we have that already in our brain.
Yeah.
Okay.
Debbie? You know, I, I could, I could reiterate what Kevin said earlier. I live on the east side, but I know a lot of people on the west side. And I'll tell you, every, when I, Randy and some of the other people come to our homeowners meetings and they just say that that Nomi Village is an ultimate disaster, okay? And if they can hear Nomi Village where it's at, a mile away.
I hear it in Breeze Swept, I'm on 130th and North Miami Avenue. My windows rattle.
So I don't, you see, when you start talking about, well, they gotta get a variance and they gotta come for a Board of Adjustment and all that, you know, it gives them wiggle room. You don't want any wiggle room. So the thing is, you say, no.
That's right.
End of story.
And that's why we see, that's why you see them in here, they want them prohibited. And then again, there's a, just, they didn't want to remove the distance separation requirements that are already there. But if you want to recommend prohibition of any of them on the west side, yeah, west side, then that's what you recommend and then that will prohibit them from being there.
Yeah. Listen, I have.
The ones that are there will be there.
I have absolutely nothing about nightclub, against nightclubs. But, you know, we're a community of very hardworking people and a lot of them are night people. A lot of them are people who work double and triple shifts, you know? I mean, they're good people, they work hard, raise good families. Last thing they need is somebody 20 feet away, you know, with music you can hear a mile away.
So you'll see.
Not to mention the traffic that gets generated around nightclubs.
And unfortunately, these nightclubs have taken advantage of the fact of how late they operate.
Right.
So our code enforcement, along with our police, have started doing specific sweeps and they actually have folks who are responsive to complaints as they come up because they're not allowed to be doing the things they're doing. There's code against what they're doing. That's why the police have to show up. So they're, so you can write a code all you want.
Enforcement.
But it's not even that. It's, people are going to ignore it.
Well, that's why if you say no, they don't even get a chance to start.
That's very true. And so there's a bigger conversations to have citywide as well as to how you want.
I mean, you know, I, I've been to two chamber meetings at two different cities and one of the universal things I've heard at each one of those meetings in which police were present, was stuff that's really going on with these vape shops. Not a good thing.
Yeah. All right.
Anyway, that's.
Let's try, yeah, let's try to move on here.
I agree, they, it's all of a sudden popped up all over the place.
Let's, um.
There's a motion on the floor, I think.
For the, for the reiteration.
Reiteration of, of the nightclub issue.
Mike made the motion.
Mike McDermid has made the motion. Do I hear a second on Mr. McDermade?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Seifert. I will do a roll call on this, please. Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
Chairman Ernst?
Yes, from Mr. Ernst. Mr. Besen?
Yes.
Mr. Each?
Yes.
Mr. Each is yes. Ms. McDermade?
Yes.
Mrs., Ms. Blamere?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Seifert?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's unanimous, all members of the planning commission.
Okay. Now you need your, your second motion.
Now, the second motion will be, was there any other comments to finish off and close us up on the ordinance before we got sidetracked on nightclubs and, and noise here?
Well, I wanted to.
That's quite all right, but, you know, I'm glad everybody read the chart because there was a lot of items in there and I wanted to make sure everybody had an understanding of what we were, and the hard work that, that Debbie has put in to try to make something out of.
I, I move the item.
Okay, Mr. McDermade moves to approve item 17-111.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Each. We'll do a roll call vote on this again.
I'm sorry, sir, who made the motion?
Mr. McDerm.
McDermade.
Mr. McDermade.
Mm-hmm. And then.
Seconded by.
Chief Each, seconded.
All right, Chairman Ernst?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McDermade?
Yes.
Commissioner Blamere?
Yes.
Commissioner Each?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pierre?
Yes.
And Commissioner Besen?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. So there's no more items on the agenda. Next thing, I wanted to find out, do we have committee reports?
You haven't, you need to set some committees up. Some committee reports.
Okay. I, I didn't realize that we could have sub-sub committees. So, good point. Old business?
Not any old business, sir.
New business?
New business, we are in the middle of hiring new staff, including a city planner who would be sitting in my seat. So perhaps when you come back in September, I'll be here introducing your new staff. And I just wanted to share that I'm finally getting staff in our department and I want to thank the personnel department for doing that.
Good.
But for that, for the purpose of this board, it is, you may have a new liaison and you may have a new secretary.
All right.
What?
Because we are zoning, we have hired a zoning technician, zoning administrator and the zoning administrator would be, I'm sorry, this, the city planner would be and the zoning, okay, I mean, I'm, it's, I'm tired, tired.
You got me confused.
Senior planning technician.
Got it.
Will be the board secretary.
Okay.
City planner will be the new liaison.
Okay.
So maybe when you come back in September, I'll be introducing you to new staff members, including perhaps a new secretary and a new liaison.
And we do hope for some cameo appearances from time to time.
So we have no, everybody's so quick to, okay, so we have no say so as far as the secretary is concerned?
No, ma'am, it's part of the person's job description.
Oh, so where is Ms.?
You can always swing by my office and say hi.
She's, she is our, that is in her job description currently as the executive assistant to the director and she has.
Well, she's been taken on the role, but it is not part of her job description.
Correct. Bless her heart, she's been doing it and doing it.
A phenomenal job. I've been here for four years, four years she has served diligently. Thank you. And I'm so sorry to hear that she won't be here.
But she will be responsible for training, the new secretary. So you will get that same quality from Sensia through.
Congratulations.
And I did get you those lovely nameplates before.
Yes. You, you've done a phenomenal job.
And the chair got a, a gold one and the vice chair got a silver, thank you, silver one.
Wow. And our attorneys have black ones.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Very nice. Well, we, thank you, thank you. I'm sure on behalf of everyone, I can truly say you've done a phenomenal job, always consistent, job, always consistent, following up, calling us, making sure that we are present to have quorum. So thank you. Thank you very much.
She will be.
My pleasure.
She will be for the, at least two to maybe three planning, um.
Meetings after the break.
Mm-hmm. She will still be there around with this person.
Mm-hmm.
Because you know what it takes, when you hire somebody, they're gonna go through a hole.
Yeah.
Stuff, right? And so they'll be under her tutelage so that you'll get the same quality.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
I will be at a loss. I think Cencia knows that.
Thank you.
You have been wonderful.
Yes, you have.
Help us. Congratulations. You have been the best.
Oh. I'll miss you guys.
All right. Um, so, Chair Paul's for adjournment?
I think we'll miss Debbie off.
We are adjourned.
Oh, no, they're not gonna miss me.
Yeah, they're gonna miss me.
Meeting adjourned.
Give it that, Gary.
Meeting adjourned.